Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council Special Meeting Wednesday, April 7th, 2021. The go-to meeting teleconference. We will now call this public hearing to order. And just so we know right up front, what we'll do is if people are on this call that would like to speak or have any comments to be made, please put your name in the chat box. And then what will happen is that will go over to Mary and then she will text me with the names of the individuals that would like to speak and then I can call on those individuals. And so again, it's a couple of new people that just arrived. What we're going to do is put your name in the chat box if you would like to speak. So again, again, it's kind of difficult. So whether it's going to be, you know, every night, you know, in for against whatever you're doing, so just put your name in there and when your name's called, you will have the ability to speak, you know, however you would like. So that being said, we will not receive public comments for on the budgets for the town and the Board of Education. And Heather Moore, you have the floor.
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I'm in the sunlight here. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Heather Moore. I don't know if we need to say I'm at Seven Hideaway. Wanted to come on tonight and just say that I support both the proposed town and education budgets. I'm the mother of two children in the Clinton Public School System and I'm also the president of the Clinton PTA. As part of my role as the Clinton PTA, I've made it a point to attend all of the Board of Ed meetings or listen in to them. And also as the taxpayer, I want to let you know that I can assure you that this is a fiscally responsible budget that also provides our children with what they need. The Board of Ed that we ourselves elected to do this work for us regularly at these meetings asked tough questions. They inquired about expenses and they clarified minute details so that they understood these budgets. Our superintendents and administration are experts on what our students need, especially next year as we try to catch up from this COVID schooling. I remind you this year, they're asking for an overall increase of only 1.18%. They've made great use of grants, COVID relief funding and utilize money that was not used this year due to COVID. This percentage could have been a lot higher if they had not been so, if they hadn't been trying so hard to utilize all these funds. I also want to remind everybody that Clinton has the second lowest pupil per pupil cost of the 10 surrounding towns and districts. So I strongly support the education budget as is with no further cuts. And I did just want to also quickly ask or give my opinion on recusing from these budget discussions. I know we have one town council member that's an employee of the school system and recuses himself. And we have a member who is an employee of the town but does not recuse themselves. I would just love as a town citizen for them there to be more consistency, either both recuse or both participate, not one of each. I would, I for one would love the teacher's input on the school budget. I would imagine it's very rare that either one of them are in a position to truly make decisions that affect their income or their individual roles. So in that rare case, maybe to recuse themselves, but I'd love to see some consistency on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Heather. And just a reminder, can everybody who is not speaking just go on mute so that we could limit the back noise and everything? So for not speaking, please go on mute. For anybody that came just recently into the call, please, just as a reminder, if you're interested in speaking, please just put your name in the chat box and then we will call on you as we go through the list. All right. Next up is Andrea Wu.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much to the Town Council and to the Board of Education for the work that they have done on the detailed budgets. It's really reassuring to have somebody at the helm who knows numbers and is got our town's best interest in heart and I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Carl. One question I had, and I don't know if I'm, it's obvious and I'm not seeing it, is there, do we see the proceeds of the, and I don't know if you cannot answer questions, I understand that might not be the case, but the proceeds from the old Morgan sale? Is that in these budget figures?
This is a budget hearing only, so we're not here to answer questions. So just taking feedback from the public at this time.
Okay, so that's a concern that I have, so I'd like to air that. I do appreciate everybody's work and appreciate the work of all of our town departments and our education department and approve, would like your request to approve both budgets as is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrea. Next up, Brian Manware.
Good evening, Brian Manware, Ark Road, Clinton. I'm here tonight to speak in support of both budgets. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work and tough decisions that have been made during this budget process by staff, department heads, boards and commissions, the town manager and the town council. Following the public hearing, there will be a special meeting held by the town council to finalize the budget. As the current vice chairman and 13-year commission member, I would like to respectfully request that the council consider the restoration of the salary of the currently vacant assistant director's position at the Department of Public Works for this year's upcoming budget. The Department of Public Works is, in my opinion, one of the most responsive, progressive and proactive agencies always out there to serve our community, especially over the past 10 years. The previous town administration commissioned a third-party validated study of the department to determine its needs and evaluate the current structure and future structure. The results of that study are publicly available and fully justify the recommendation of the director and commission members at that time. While as a commission, we were not happy, or as a commission, we were happy with the results of the study, however, we did not support the fact that it cost the taxpayers nearly $44,000 to land where we could have landed for free. But I guess that's just the cost of transparency. Now, two years later, we are taking steps backwards instead of forward. We, as a commission, are open to discussing an internal evaluation of the existing structure with all parties involved, but that can't fully be explored or discussed if the funding doesn't remain in place. We understand that the timing of the vacancy made it an easy target for a cut and that it had no immediate impact, but since the vacancy, the impact has been noticeable and will continue to grow if it is not addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I apologize for saying this over and over again, but I still keep seeing people coming in, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on. If anybody does wish to speak, please put your name in the chat box and you would be called on in order that you responded. Next up is Karen Dossoink.
Thank you. I live at 152 Glenwood Road. I have three children in the Clinton Public Schools and I'm here tonight to support the school budget as is. I've spoken multiple times over the years and one of the things that I've spoken about is how amazing and wonderful the staff, faculty, the pares, the people who take care of the buildings and maintenance, the IT people have all been extraordinarily there for our children and never more so than in this very, very difficult situation of the pandemic. That said, one thing that I want to note for the entire town is that for our most vulnerable populations in the school district, this was a really disastrous year and not because of the efforts of the people involved, but because we have consistently underfunded our schools for decades and that has to change. And I think we need more creative solutions, including, you know, it's, it's great that, you know, everyone's happy with the, the mill rate going down, but that's a maintenance of the severe underfunding of our schools. And because of that underfunding, the schools were not able to respond as quickly and appropriately for our most vulnerable special needs populations, our English language learners, our students who, you know, experience difficulty because of their home situation and their economic situation. And so what I'm encouraging, even as we pass this budget, that for future years, we think much more creatively about how we can really fully give the funding our schools deserve and to give the resources to these excellent professionals that we have working at every level of the schools because it really wasn't enough this year. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you, Karen. Now we move on to Erica Galvin.
Good evening. My name is Erica Galvin. I live at Two Alden Drive and I'm the Chair of the Board of Education. Just a couple of things that I want to, I want to point out. The first of which is to remind everyone that all of our budget information can be found on ClintonPublic.net website. And I really encourage you to do your homework. Now is the time to do your homework, to find out what is, what work went into this budget, what is included in this budget and then make an informed decision about whether or not you can, you can support the hard work that's been done by the, by the board and by the administration. Just a couple of things that I want to point out, you know, if COVID has done nothing else for us, it's really helped us to bring into sharp relief how, how critically, you know, how critical the role of a thoughtful and responsive government is. And we obviously, kind of to Karen's point, you know, we really have done, we've moved mountains in the last, what is it, 13 months now to really make sure that our schools were a place of nurturance and safety and, and kind of a light on the hill, if you will. And I'm very proud of that work. And this budget really kind of reflects our understanding, our rededication of our commitment to making sure that those tax dollars are being, being asked for appropriately with propplement documentation and support and are being managed very dutifully to make sure that there is not waste or, or any sort of impropriety in terms of how the, the education budget is spent. And COVID has really kind of allowed us to redouble those efforts and make sure that we're really doing our due diligence to make sure that, that that is the case. This budget really reflects our, our two main things, the first of which is, or I guess really three main things. The first is our continuing reductions that are, that have been the result of things like transitioning to the state healthcare plan where we're still seeing savings over where we would have been had we not made the move, that move. The second is that, you know, we really have kind of come back to this basic question of are we staffed appropriately? And that's a question that we ask continually all the time. Anyway, we look at class numbers, we look at enrollments, we look at the needs of, we need, look at the needs of our students and we look at the, the directives of our community about what they want their school districts to be. And then we, the administration makes staffing choices based upon that. The board then makes funding choices based upon those staffing choices. And I can tell you with great confidence that this budget reflects appropriate staffing for our school district. And then the third thing is this real, this very meaningful realization that, you know, while we're kind of getting, you know, we might be getting some temporary supports to help navigate the world of COVID in the short term, that the impacts of COVID on our young people and our staff and our community for that matter are going to be much more long lasting. And this budget really kind of reflects an appreciation that there are certain things that we need to be able to support to make sure that we are positioning our young people in our town in the best possible way to be able to come out of COVID and the surround, you know, the other economic and societal challenges that will come with that. So I, and the other, the, the separate as an aside, the other thing that I also want to make note of is that, you know, through, we, we all knew this, but through COVID, we really kind of, it allowed us to really kind of have the, the conversation that, you know, this dichotomy of education in town is really not real, that I've always said it, pardon the pun, it's two sides of the same coin, that it's not us versus them, it's not the education or the town budget. We are part of the same community, we are part of the same needs for, for our citizens and we need to fund them as such. So while I'm here, you know, to kind of tout and call your attention to the hard work of the Board of Education informing this budget, I would also like you to do the same due diligence and looking at the town budget because this isn't an us versus them situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erica. Next up will be Laura Colbank.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Laura Colbank, 8 Fernwood Lane. I have two children that have been, are, are in the, in the school system and I am here, I specifically just support the education budget. I agree with Erica that this is an all-in, but I have really quite honestly, just really been focused on education. That's what I've spent my time understanding. And to, I won't reiterate all the points that Erica made, with the exception, I really encourage everybody to look at the two-page summary that Superintendent O'Donnell published on April 1st. The charts tell the numbers. And bottom line, this education budget is fiscally responsible, the points that Heather already said, just a 1.18% increase in the second lowest cost per pupil expenditure on the shoreline. We are extremely fortunate to have a superintendent and Board of Ed that worked tirelessly, not just during the budget season, but all year long to contain costs. So with that, I just respectfully request that to support the budget as is. And I know, Chris, you said you're not taking questions, but I did want to ask because there's been some confusion or express a concern about the emails that were sent in March to the town council. And then I heard that there were none that were sent to the budget@ClintonConnecticut.org and I sent one yesterday just to make sure and I heard that there were none received. Can you clarify?
Yep, thank you first for your comments. Second, your email was received, it was sent to the council members and there was one other email that was sent to the email for the budgets and that was responded to by call because the individual, Kathleen Kirby, had some specific questions and call addressed those specifically to her.
Okay. The ones that were, were sent in March, are those also received by the town council?
Everything that's been, that's been sent to us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Edwards.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kelly Edwards from 150 Nod Road. I'm here tonight, not as my town position, as substance abuse prevention coordinator, but as a parent. I am here to fully support the Board of Ed budget. And just on a side note, due to the surveys that we do through my job, I am well aware of the mental health needs of our young people. Over and over again, prior to COVID and now during COVID, the young people are saying that there's really a need for the other adults that are in their life. And I just feel that it's essential that we keep every employee and that there's a continued focus on our mental health services. So I think the budget reflects that. It reflects that we are concerned about our young people and I fully support. And thank you for everyone for all of the hard work because I know that budgets are there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. And then we have one more that's, that's listed now. So if there's anybody else on the call that would like to speak, please put your name in the chat box and then we'll call on you when ready. Right now, it's Chuck Hill.
Hello, Chuck Hill, 33 Willa Lane, also a member of the DPW Commission. I am in support of both budgets and I appreciate the hard work everybody put into them. I do have to, I guess, protest the elimination of the Assistant Director for DPW. I also have to just state, as a member of the DPW Commission, being completely unaware that this is going to happen and even after the position was cut, we were never informed until we found it eliminated from the line item in the budget. So I do want to protest that, but other than that, I am in favor of both budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. At this point, that is the last of the names that have been submitted. If there are callers on, if they would like to speak, you certainly will have the opportunity if you choose to. So I know, I know there's a couple of callers that are on here, so if there's anyone interested in speaking, you know, we'll give you some time if you would like to speak. If not, again, if anybody else on the call is, would like to speak, please put your name in the chat box. We'll just give this a couple of minutes. All right, I mean, at this point, nobody else is coming forward. So if we are all good with this one last time, if there's nobody else that would like to speak, at this point, we will look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Favor?
All right.
opposed, abstained, thank you very much. We will now move on to item 04, which is called the Town Council Special Meeting to Order and move on to item number five, which is to discuss and take possible action on the budget. At this point, we open this up to the council members. So at this point, if there's council members that would have, that have anything they would like to discuss about the budget before we move forward, at this time, please feel free.
Yeah, I've had numerous discussions with the Public Works Department and in thinking over this budget and looking over this budget, I would like to make a motion to put their, the position back in the budget for a, an employee, not the executive, the Assistant Director, not the $138,000 position, but the boots-on-the-ground employee for $90,000. They have, in the end result of the last two years or three years since Pete Neff announced he was leaving, they are down an employee, a full-time employee. When Todd moved up to become Assistant Director, he was replaced with a rank and file person, but when Bill left, that took a personnel member out of the equation. So at this point, they are down staffing. So I feel that in order to maintain the services that we have enjoyed as a town and to deliver these services consistently, we, it would be in the best move of the council to put that employee back into their budget. I want to remind the town council that if the police department was down an officer, we would not hesitate to refund that position and put that officer back in place. If the Board of Education wanted to implement a new procedure or program, we would fund that as well. To me, the Department of Public Works is what your typical taxpayer gets for their tax dollars in Clinton. They keep our roads, they keep our parks, they keep our, our beach, they are there in any sense of an emergency and we need to do everything in our capability to support them and give them what they need to maintain the level of service that we all enjoy. This morning, Carl mentioned how the Board of Assessment Appeal outcome has impacted the grand list as of this date and the mill rate. And honestly, I, my opinion is that putting an employee, a rank and file employee back into the Public Works Department is in the best interest of the citizens of Clinton. And I would like to see that, I would like to make a motion to put that employee back into the budget. Is there a second? Keep in mind, if it was a police officer, you wouldn't hesitate. If the Board of Education is getting a $700,000 raise, this is what you get for your tax dollars, our excellent, bar none, top-of-the-line Department of Public Works. I think we owe them this support.
Carol, I just, I agree with almost everything that you say and, but I just would like to hear first, before we make motions to add to this budget, I certainly agree with, again, what you said. And I had talked with several members and I have two questions. One, I'd like to ask Mr. Kilduff, there is a part-time position there at the DPW right now, what does that cost us? To make the line short, I had talked to several individuals on DPW and I said, if possible, I would really entertain the idea of bumping up the part-time person who, we have money in that budget already, so it would be less of an impact. We bump up the part-time person to a full-time position. It sort of takes a little, lighten the load a little bit of the increase. And I sort of got some positive responses that at least that would be a start in the right direction. I do agree with Carol about, they have taken on quite a bit of work. Just noticed on Facebook the other day, people cheering about how they're down Esposito Beach and they did great job there and they're up at Peters Park and they are working up there, so.
Have they ever said no? Have they ever said, no, we can't do that? I've never heard that from them.
No, I understand that, Carol, but again, before we do anything, I really would like to, as you said, Carol, and alluded to, I understand that there may be an impact on our, on what we had heard before as far as the mill rate being decreased. So I'd like to hear first all the suggestions and then hear from Mr. Kilduff before we add anything. And, and I'm not saying in a negative way that I'm not against what you had said, but I would like to hear all the information first to find out just, do we gain a lot? Do we gain just a little bit before we starting adding on anything, anything at all? And again, Mr. Kilduff, if you could just sort of give me an idea what the part-time individual over there, DPW, which is already in the budget, what that's going to cost us and I'll shut my mouth.
The salary for the part-timer is in, it's $7,200. They provided coverage at the transfer station.
Do we, we don't have a dollar figure, like it's $40,000 a year, $50,000? What do we budget for?
$7,200.
That's it, $7,000? Okay, thank you. Thank you for that information.
Christine Gopiel here. I'd like to just reflect back a little bit on the report that was created for the town and within that report, it was highlighted that when the DPW director goes on holiday and/or is out sick. and/or is out sick, it leaves a gap in leadership for the department. And specifically related to the amount of paperwork and the intricacy of that paperwork, filing reports, et cetera. I know with the FEMA disaster that we had back a couple of years ago, there was substantial amount of work and knowledge that needed to be created within this and happened through leadership and through working with that director, you know, Todd Hayek, as he transitioned into the position, to understand what was required. There's also budgetary things that need to be addressed. There's personnel areas that need to be addressed. And, and that is why we ultimately had the conversation while creating the Assistant Director position. The, in addition, I think the report really touched on the fact that you need transition planning. You need to know that you have somebody coming up the ranks that has the ability to do the work. And what happened unfortunately, when Pete Neff retired, we had to go through a process of understanding what, what ultimately the position needed because Pete was wearing probably three different hats. And what we had was in the skill set within the department and whether we needed to go outside to fill that skill set. So there's a lot of components within that report and to really focus on what's needed within the department. I, you know, I'd like to hear a little bit from our director, how he feels, whether he feels as though he can manage without that assistant position, especially in light of the union contracts and his ability to utilize the current staff to help support him in his role.
I mean, at this point, I mean, this is the discussion amongst the Town Council members. So we've gone through the budget hearings. I mean, a lot of this stuff, as far as talking about all of this, should have been done prior to at the budget hearing meetings. So we're here to kind of discuss the budget as it's been presented. You know, so to be able to go back and now start asking other questions, you know, at this time is really not the appropriate time to be doing that because we've already, we've dealt with that.
Well, if that's the case, I would like to make a motion to amend the motion to allow for, to refill that position in light of the additional revenue coming in from the town for, to add the Assistant Public Works Director position back in.
So Carol, you would have to amend your motion?
I will amend that, my motion to read as Christine just stated.
And then that's a second.
With the proviso that if this does not pass, I can bring up another motion.
You could always bring up another motion. So at this point, we're looking then to the motion on the floors then to reappoint, or actually to budget for the additional body for DPW. Is that correct?
Well, the amended motion is to make it an assistant.
Director's position.
And if I'm not mistaken.
So you want the Assistant Director position to be put back in place?
That's what Christine just said, correct, Christine?
Go ahead, Carol.
Isn't that what you said, Christine?
That is correct. To amend the motion to reinstate the Assistant Public Works Director position within the budget as opposed to just a, one of the, the union positions.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to read that way. Now we need a second.
Well, I'll, I'll second that because I do believe we need another person in DPW. I would prefer myself, as Carol mentioned, that if they don't need an Assistant Director, I would be more comfortable hiring for a, a worker be more than an Assistant Director. It would save money, but it seemed to me in our previous discussions and other meetings that that's really what Todd wanted in the first place. He didn't really, I didn't get the impression that he was vying to fill an Assistant Director's position, but that he was looking to fill a position to help in the field. And so therefore, I'm more comfortable going that route and add that person.
Thank you, Tim.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I would vote against the Assistant Director and go with a, another body in the field.
Mark, thank you, Tim.
Chris, we, the town authorized for to hire a town manager. And we did. And now we are in a sense, second guessing the town manager because he has reviewed these budgets and that's what he's there for. And he's put this proposal to us and now to the town. So I feel uncomfortable changing that budget that we've asked him to spend umpteen weeks and that he's presenting, which he thought was the most fiscally responsible budget. And now we're saying we want to add more. I just, again, I'm uncomfortable with that. But that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments?
Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Hold on, one second. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I largely agree with Mark in that it seems like we've put a lot of work into the, both of these budgets. Had a lot of back and forth and, and at this point to, to add another position into it. But I do understand with Christine made the, we had this recent discovery about some additional funds. Carl, what would those numbers look like if we did go with an Assistant DPW person or an Assistant worker for the DPW? How would that affect the total budget? I'm just curious.
The total bottom line of the town would increase. The prior discussion during the workshops was for a truck driver position that with salary benefits and payroll taxes came in at $90,405. The Assistant Public Works Director with the same considerations came in at $111,524. So the bottom line of the budget would go up. If you're looking for, what does that mean from a taxes consequence? Impacting the mill rate and one one-hundredth of a mil was still $16,000. So the Assistant Public Works Director comes in at seven one-hundredths of a mil. The other position comes in at five and a half, six one-hundredths of a mil.
So instead of a, I'm sorry.
I, my point is, it just, it feels like the wrong time or in place to make these adjustments. I could be wrong. It's just my second time through a budget, but it just, I'm not comfortable with making these adjustments right now. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hello?
So Carl, right now, the proposed mill rate is 30.24. Am I correct?
30.30.
Oh, okay. So it would be, so you're talking about if it was the adding in the director, it'd be 30.37? If it was adding a boots-on-the-ground, it would be 30.35? Okay, all right.
That's to give you an apples-to-apples basis. We jumped into this conversation without talking about the grand list adjustment and what that translates into in terms of a mill rate and then any other budget amendments. I do have one more for you to consider to reduce the expenditure on the town side before pushing this up for the referendum.
And I do understand that there are appeals being made to the Board of Assessment Appeals, that there are actions being taken on the part of taxpayers on certain properties. So that is not finite yet. I mean, that is not determined yet what the actual result of the Board of Assessment Appeals is going to be, but right now.
The board is done and they have completed their work. Anybody who had a value over a million dollars, which is basically commercial properties, are going direct to court. And then, of course, people have the ability to go to court if they're not satisfied with the board's decision-making. But the board itself finished their work in time last, oh, last month, but we're only seven days into this month. Should we discuss the other things that you have, Carl, that maybe, you know, you want to bring forth to us as far as suggestions or anything else? So at least we're with that, maybe prior to us dealing with what's on the table right now? Yep. So first and foremost, is that adjustment to the grand list. Grand list that was signed off by the assessor and went out to the Town Council was, came in at $1,651,000, change, was the size of the grand list. For the purposes of putting together the budget, I discounted that trying to hedge against where Board of Assessment Appeals would go and how the public would respond to their revale notices with increased values. So for the purposes of the budget calculation, when the council went through its workshop, the grand list was at $1,618,000. And the assessor is finishing up her adjustments that were approved by the board, which gives you the ability to put back and undo some of that discount to the grand list. So you could set the grand list at $1,646,000. Instead of the 30.30 mils, that would put the mill rate at 29.77.
I'm sorry, that's 29 what?
29.77. It's a 4.7% decrease over where we were last year, which was a zero from the year before that. So that, that does not include any other adjustments that you're talking about. There is one other adjustment that could be made to the, the line item that pays for MERS, which is the state pension program that some of the town employees are in. When we built the budget, there was an assumption of what the required contribution was going to be. Comptroller's Office issued a letter in March advising us that the contribution amount was going to be going down. So that provides an opportunity for a reduction in what we budgeted on that front. So that's under the General Government Other Budget. And the line item is state retire contribution. It's currently budgeted at $624,000. You, based on the assumption that came out of the Comptroller's Office, you could take another $10,000 off of that line item?
Yeah. I mean, for my two cents, $10,000 off of, what is it, $677 or whatever, that really doesn't make that much of a big difference. So well, Mr., okay, that said, it's part of all this adjustments and the extra monies and everything. Where you are, we are now looking at a mill rate of 29.77. Is that correct?
That's based on just the grand list change. That does not include any of this prior discussion about public work staffing.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. At this particular moment, if we didn't change anything, we're at 29.77. I hate to keep on pestering you, but if we added that regular employee to the DPW, could you give me an idea what that mill rate would go up? Again, would it be like, to like 29.79?
Eight-five.
29.83.
29.83. Thank you, sir.
Christine Gopiel. This is a little bit difficult to calculate, but I had raised at the last meeting. When we're looking at a five, I believe it was 5.7 or 5.2% increase in the valuation of properties as an average, how does that impact ultimately that reduction, that 2.977? You know, if you have a taxpayer whose property went up that 5%, you can't calculate it unless you have specifically that property owner's parcel, you know, $300,000, et cetera. But is there a way we could look at it from the standpoint of the universal increase? Because we do know that, that total number, so capturing that total number of the 5.7% increase of the overall property values and then looking at it in terms of the 2.977%. Ultimately, my concern is taxpayers are going to be concerned when they still receive a bill with an increase, even though the mill went down, but their valuation went back up.
So I'm not sure how to calculate that for you on the fly. I have, I mean, it's all situational. So I've got housing styles and certain housing styles appreciated in value greater than others. It's a little tougher to throw out a number at you that's based on just, just an average, which may not sync up well with the sort of the general public.
Well, generally, what they do.
Give me a minute and talk amongst yourselves. I'll try to put something together for you. I mean, the difficult thing is, is that obviously, you know, the struggle is, is that every property increased a different amount. So the style of home is what the increase was related to. So you have, you know, five different styles of home. They're all different, you know, you know, variables that, that are involved there. So that's kind of a, a difficult thing to kind of figure out for the average. There's really no average because it's all different properties. You know, and you're right, people are going to have a difficult time understanding our mill rate went down, you know, fairly significantly. You know, but their taxes are still going to go up because of the revale. So, you know, that's why I think that, you know, when we talked about this budget is, you know, I was hoping that we could do and stay as flat as possible because we knew that was going to happen. We knew last year that, that revale was coming our way and that we would be, we would be facing these issues this year. You know, so this isn't something that was new to us. This is something that we were aware of. And, you know, that's why, I mean, I think at this point, we've done what we can in order to try to keep it as flat as possible. So it's going to be a tough number to kind of gauge as far as who's going to pay what.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we're in a situation where this is a tough year to make decisions to add to the budget because of the revale. You know, next year, we, we would be a lot, in a better position to determine if position needed to be added to departments because then we would have a true comparison, apples to apples. This year, it's very difficult to determine how the budget is going to affect due to the revale. So that's something I guess we really have to think about in this discussion, particularly with a new position or another position.
And then the other issue is that, you know, the revales, they are in place and BAA has done all their, but those people that weren't, you know, didn't get the, an adjustment can certainly go to court and, you know, and fight it. So that's also, you know, the piece that's sitting out there as far as that goes. Because we don't know who's going to, you know, fight it and go to court and what adjustments may be made when they do go to court. So, you know, that, that has to be also something that's out there that we need to think about as well.
Are we waiting for information or, I mean, there is, there is a motion on the floor. Are we?
Yeah, but I mean, I think they're also, some of the numbers.
Christine Gopiel again. I, I want to just bring everybody's attention to your town charter, specifically Chapter 10. You might want to, if we have a moment, review it and understand your duty as a town council. Keeping in mind, we did get rid of the Board of Finance and that meant we also took the responsibilities of that Board of Finance upon ourselves as Town Councilmen. There's nobody questioning Carl's ability to do what he's done in terms of presenting a budget. Ultimately, it's our responsibility to analyze that budget and make decisions based on how our constituents feel, how they've advocated for specific line items in the budget and how we ultimately determine how to utilize. those funds. So again, I would strongly suggest you look to Chapter 10 and, you know, review what, what your authority is and role.
I mean, that being said, we also have to understand that putting us under that purview of being the Board of Finance, we don't have interaction with the department heads. So our interaction is with Carl, who has those conversations with the department heads as it relates to their budgets. So, you know, they're relaying a message to him that then again gets relayed to us. So we're not involved in any of those conversations. So like Mark had mentioned, you know, basically, we are taking, you know, the town manager's opinions on a lot of these things because that's how it's structured. Though the charter may give us that distinction that we are technically the Board of Finance, you know, maybe we need to look at that because if we are going to be that Board of Finance, then I think that we should then at that point change, you know, how it, how it works. Because I think as council members, then we should have the ability then to speak to a department head and ask those questions. Because there may be questions that we would like asked that we don't know if they were or were not asked during those conversations that the town manager had with those department heads. Mark?
Chris, yes. One more point. We actually discussed this budget in depth. Carl presented it to us on multiple nights. We did our due diligence. We did our duty and we voted. We voted in each portion of this to approve it and to bring it forth to the public. So we acted as the Board of Finance, if you would, during those several meetings we had in February.
So to the math exercise that was requested, I can give you a rough average with a caveat that it probably doesn't sync up with a large number of people. So last year, the average home or the average taxpayer example that we used was based on a home worth $300,000, which developed, resulted in an assessment of $210,000. At the then tax rate of 31.25, the average taxpayer's tax bill was $6,552. And that would just be for the home, not consideration for vehicles. So then average house increases in value. That average range increase takes the $300,000 home up to $320,000. The assessment is $224,000. The mill rate of 29.77 mills results in a tax bill of $6,682, an increase of $130 over where it was previously. Their total tax bill is reduced because the value or the drop in the millage reduces their car tax liability. So the reduction in car tax liability, an average reduction in car tax liability applied against this average increase puts the average taxpayer increase at $91 or 1.39%. And that doesn't include any further adjustments to the budget if that's where the council wants to go.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
Thank you, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
Don't hold me to it because it's five minutes worth of work.
Oh, that's pretty darn good.
All right. So at this point, I guess we have some kind of basic numbers. I mean, maybe let's, let's vote on the motion that's on the floor now and, and kind of take it from there. So the motion on the floor now is the budget for the Assistant DPW Director, I guess, is what the motion is, is that's on the floor right now. We have a first and a second. Is there any other further discussion on that motion? Okay, at this point, all in favor of that motion? All in favor of the motion, the budget for the Assistant DPW Director?
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
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 So at this point, the, the budget for the DP, the Assistant DPW Director has failed. Is there any other further discussion at this point about?
I would like to make, can I make a new motion?
You certainly can.
I would like to make a motion to add a regular employee back into the public works budget for the next fiscal year.
Is there a
Regular full-time employee. I don't know if I need to phrase it better, but a regular full-time employee.
Essentially, you want a budget, you want a budget for a full-time DPW worker?
Correct.
A truck driver was the position discussed previously.
Correct. Okay, yes, that's it.
So the motion will be to budget for a truck driver for DPW.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any other further discussion on this motion?
Well, I'll add my two cents. I was going to make a motion, Carl, that we, again, I'm trying to play solemn. I was going to ask if we could make it a, like a, a half position, if you will. Increase, increase the part-time guy. I can't believe we only pay $7,000 for a part-time position. We could boost the hours on that part-time guy and get them up there into the $45,000 category. And I think the hours would work out that they'd get a lot of hours out of them. So I was going to suggest that we bump up the part-time position to help out DPW, but still not impact that, that mill rate increase. But that's just my two cents as far as that's concerned. I don't know how that would get over with you, Carol.
I think the issue with that is because that, that part-time worker is at the transfer station. What they're looking for is a truck driver. So you have to make sure that obviously the proper licenses for that individual. So
As the liaison to the Public Works Commission, this is the discussion I have overheard, that this is the, a position that they would be satisfied to meet their needs right now.
Which position is that, Carl?
The full-time truck driver position.
All right. Okay, I see.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't dispute that DPW could certainly use a truck driver. I still, as Mark initially stated, I just don't feel this is, we've done our work. We've gone through this budget. We've spent a lot of time. It just, what would, what would stop other folks from making other requests at this time? If this is the precedent we decide to set. And again, I'm sure DPW could use this position. They do a wonderful job not to disparage any of their work. It just doesn't seem like the right time to make this decision. That's my two cents.
Anybody else? I mean, and again, this is the time, obviously, that we would have these discussions as it relates to some of these items. So, you know, I mean, listen, I don't think anybody here is going to dispute what DPW does for our town. I mean, I don't think there's anybody on this, in this whole town will ever dispute that. So, you know, I guess, you know, the discussion that was had, it looks, seems like at the beginning, was that we were not going to budget for that Assistant DPW position. That was kind of what was discussed when we went through this whole budget discussions and budget workshops. And that was, that was relayed to us from Carl. So I think that was his, you know, you know, push to us was that that was his discussion. Again, this goes back to the whole Board of Finance, you know, who's involved with the discussions, you know, as it relates to that. So, you know, we're going to rely on that information that comes from Carl as it relates to that. And then, you know, as far as the worker and the truck driver, you know, it's something obviously that they discussed that they felt that they, that they would be in need of. Yes, I think we should have, and should have had this discussion sooner than this evening. Yes, I'm not doubting that. You know, but unfortunately, it has been brought forth and now we're discussing it now. So, you know, not the ideal time to have this conversation. It would have been something that we would have liked to discuss at the budget workshops. But at this point, we are where we are. So, you know, we have this, we have these motions and we'll, we'll try to do the best we can for the town and try to limit, you know, the increases as much as we can. And that's how we have to look at it. Doing the best for the citizens with, with learning, you know, did these increases as best we can with what we're facing overall. Obviously, a difficult time again, COVID last year, this year, obviously relating to revamp. So it puts us in a very, you know, awkward position again because there are still some unknowns that are out there. So as it stands now, if anybody else has any other comments on this? Hearing none, we will now then take a vote on budgeting for a truck driver for DPW. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Against?
Chris, you're going to have to vote.
Against?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say aye. It's Christine Gupiel.
You're, wait, wait, can we start this over? I'm confused as to who voted what now.
Dennis, Mark, Christine, you voted in favor. And Tim, Tim?
Yes, I voted in favor.
Okay, we all good with that? Okay, so at this point, then that passes. So then we will budget for a DPW truck driver in this year's budget.
Thank you.
I'll vote on that.
Sorry, Dennis?
What was, what was the vote? Five in favor or one against? Or I didn't?
I think it was one against.
No, two.
Two.
Eric and I were negative.
Both were against, okay.
Yeah, see, that's what I thought. That's why I asked that. But Mark put his hand up for a no. And so it ended up four to two. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. Good? Any other discussions that we would like to have at this point?
I would suggest that you take that pension reduction in order to, you know, again, focus on the bottom line and you've added $90,000, at least try and skim off a little bit for what that means to the taxpayer.
At the $10,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tim.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept the reduction in the pension amount, in the amount of $10,000.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Thank you. Anything else we'd like to discuss? This is it. Last call. All right, hearing done, then we will move on to number six, which is to recommend the town and Board of Education budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and send to referendum May 12, 2021. We have a motion.
Make that motion. Nobody else wants to.
Thank you, Carl. Is there any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Thank you all very much. Thank you again, Carl, for all the work and all the department heads, everybody that's been involved in this process. Obviously, it's been another difficult year, but thank you again for all the hard work everybody's put into this. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.